I call this August 14 Jackson County Commission Meeting to order have a roll call. District one, Mr. Guthrie.
Present.
District two, Mr. Benwell.
Present.
District three, Mr. Gilbert.
Present.
District four, Mr. Seuss.
Present.
Chairman also present. We do have a call on present this evening. We'll have our invocation by Mr. Porter and our pledge by Mr. Benwell.
Well, God our Father, we're truly blessed to live in this wonderful county and this wonderful country. Thank you for that blessing. Right now, God, as the students return to school, we pray for our students, our teachers, and all those that are involved in the educational process. We pray for good safety, that they'll have a good year learning, and the teachers will have a good year being able to teach. God, we pray for them, and pray you'll keep them in your hands, watch over them, guide them through this year. Watch over us all, God. We do pray for those that are hurting amongst us. We pray especially for Mike's dad. We pray that he'll continue to improve and that his situation will get better. We pray that you watch over us all. In Christ's name we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At first item's approval of the agenda, we have ten items, ten items on our agenda this evening. Are there any changes before proceed? Do you have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'm a...
Motion, grab a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. No awards or presentations. We have one individual sign up to speak this evening, so Ms. Sharon Thomas.
Okay.
Are you here to speak? You're signed up.
Yeah, I'm signed up. Do I have standup?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whatever you need.
Well, I guess I'm here for the people that live in Flat Rock to help them with their situation of the biosolids being spread close to their homes. First, I would like to kind of start back, I know it's later years, but the same thing is happening to them that happened to my family in Fabius, which is Flat Rock. And I live on the bluff overlooking the river. And in 1995, the city of Chattanooga and TVA, just a few, chosen few, I would say, decided that they were going to dump, and I have all these articles, I have everything, you know, to look at. But they decided that they wanted to kind of not fill their landfill up at the cost of, at our expense, in other words. They get a tipping fee, like when people dump stuff in a landfill. But they were bringing truckload after truckload, and it wasn't little wafer things like I guess they're doing now, but it was running out of the trucks. They were dumping it below my house, probably about a quarter to half mile. In six weeks, I worked for the health department here in Scottsboro, and we tested around 150 wells, and 60 percent of those were already contaminated with E. coli and other mercury, I don't know what all, anyway, fecal coliform, E. coli was in their well water. So we proceeded to go below that and go to, I don't know if y'all are all familiar with Coon Creek Guff. The houses down there were contaminated, but the thing that stuck out in my mind is, a lot of you know I've been working on getting Lake Gunners full restocked and fish, getting fish back, which that was a success, but we've still got a little few things to do. But in 1995, when they dumped that, there was the biggest fish killed, and we didn't think of it at that time. It killed turtles, it killed every滴 of water on the water. There were so many dead fish from that sludge. And working with TVA, of course, Adam just kind of slid it under the table, and we've still got that sludge out there to this day in pits. And I've got an article out of the Times in 2008 written by David Brewer here from Scottsboro that said that TVA had a problem with their sludge. That was in Fabius Mines. It was just dangerously high with E. coli, mercury, and other chemicals. So if it's laid there dormant so many years, and one thing that concerned me, and I will get to this in a minute with their deal, is the fact that a lot of people that we spoke with at that time, we did our own water sampling and testing of this whatever matter that they brought out there. And the lab that we used was in Birmingham. And the E. coli and the fecal coliform was like supposed to have been 10 colonies per milliliter. Ours was reading 1,600 colonies per milliliter at that time. And the guy called us and said, "You need to get help now," because it was just terrible. So, but it's still sitting there. And the only thing they were concerned with was like this was coming from Erlanger, Memorial, all of their stuff out of the hospital. They said hepatitis C, any contagious disease that laid dormant, if it ever got turned over or got into the well system, it could be caught, just like, you know, a very contagious disease. And I worry about that, but a lot of people are still on well water in my area, and luckily we got public water. And Adam just wrote us off. They said, "Well, you should be happy because you've got well, uh, public water." I said, "Yes, but you were supposed to do more testing," which they did, and they just wrote it off. So when this deal come up with Lake Majestic Farms dumping the sewage sludge, I call it sludge and sewage because that's all it is, they can call it whatever they want to make it sound better, biosolids or whatever. It's the same thing, same place that it come from, that they're putting on those fields that's getting in the Flat Rocks Creek, and in turn, that's going into the river. Right by my house through the abandoned coal mines, doing the same thing. And tried to get a copy from Adam of their testing in March, they would not let us have. And they said that what they done was put a year's worth in just a few months. And the last time they tested it was like two, three weeks ago. It was subsiding, but the problem was still there. But yet, we're to get, we don't have a copy, you know, to see what is in that. But it's basically the same thing that we had in 95 and 2008. Ours is still laying down there, and then they're getting, getting it dumped in their yard and going into Flat Rock Creek, going in turn in Dry Creek, and that goes into Coon Creek Guff. So you've got magazines are putting out that the fish, don't eat the fish, don't eat the fish. Every fishing magazine that comes to my house, don't eat the fish in Tennessee River from such and such point with its creek, and it gives the points not to because they are highly contaminated with mercury. And you can go to Coon Creek now and can't catch fish because it's killed mainly all of them out. So in turn, like I said, they're going through the same thing, and it needs to be stopped one way or the other. And if you have to do petitions and get 10 percent of the 31,000 people that vote here, we'll do it. But I will, my mess cleaned up too, so, you know, kill two birds with one stone. But, you know, for people not to care about other people, that just, you know, when money talks, that's what it's all about to me. They don't care anything about the public. They don't care anything about people. And we're having to live with that, and I don't, I just don't like that. I guess the older I get, I get thinking about things that people have done over the years, and it's not right at all.
Just to clarify the process we're at, and I think you mentioned something to me. When was the, you mentioned the 1,600 per milliliter, or when was that test done?
That was done in 1995. I have a copy that we sent to Birmingham. And they were just off, I mean, they called immediately when they got there, and they said, "You are dealing with some very dangerous things. You need to address." We called CDC, we called Washington, we called everybody that we could think of, and when they found out it was TVA, they just, they wouldn't answer our calls. And Stella Hauser, I'm sure a lot of you remember her, she's the one, she and I worked together on this. And, you know, one or two people can't do it by themselves, and it's something, like I said, we're still looking at a mess that, down there, and they were thinking about cleaning it up in 2008, hadn't done it. So they're going to spray it again.
We, from the process the commission has adopted at this point in time to deal with this, of course, we're very aware of it, we've met, you know, some individuals and been out and taking a look at some of the sites. We think there may be a process where the commission can deal with it. The first step that we plan to take was to sit down and meet with individuals from both the company that spreads this, as well as the members of the municipality that, their sewer system that work with this, to try to understand a little bit more about that process and understand what goes on behind that. And I don't know how long they've been participating in this or what situation it may be. But that's currently the way that the commission's headed to understand more about that, and then to come back and determine, okay, what can we do, if anything, about this, understanding how that process works. Will we, as a commission, under the, what is the name of that law?
Self-Governance Act.
Self-Governance Act, be able to take any action on this at all? So I think we have to understand exactly the process behind it, and then what, you know, if, if and what that would fall under our jurisdiction with the Self-Governance Act, and obviously before we can do anything. So that is our first step. We hope to have a meeting in the next two or three weeks with some members from that group to understand, to get a little bit more about the process, and then we can make a decision from there as to how we want to move forward.
One more question, one more thing. This letter from the mayor of Chattanooga that states that they will not apply any more biosolids on the property owned by Lake Majestic Farms, but they have a subcontractor, Denali, out of Chattanooga. Does that eliminate them also, or is that just getting?
I can't answer that question. That would be for whoever wrote the letter to respond to. I'm not sure what, I saw something similar, but I'm not sure what that would imply.
Yeah, well, this is from the mayor of Chattanooga, and I just, I had to think of that when I was reading, you know, maybe there's a loophole somewhere as to where, well, he's got the property, but I've got a subcontractor that can do this.
Right.
Yeah.
And as I understand, there's a legal process to handle this, but again, that's what we're trying to understand a little bit more about, is what's the legal process? Is all that's being done by that process? And is, you know, ultimately, what's, what's being said is safe? Does it qualify as a nuisance if it is being done in this capacity? That's what we're trying to get all those questions answered, so that we can determine whether we can act or not. Now, we're very, the county itself is very limited in what it can do, so in this particular case, we have one provision that might fall into it, but it's a might right now, we're trying to understand that.
Well, this is just a start, so, yeah.
Any, any other comments from the commissioners right now? If I, and if I misrepresented where we're headed with this, let me know, but that's as I understood from our last meeting, how we plan to proceed.
And thank you for your input and insight.
Well, I could go on, but I, I get emotional sometimes about this because, you know, it's just not right. I mean, to me, it's not.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate what you've done for several things and what you're doing on this, and appreciate everybody that's here today, you know, in regard to this, because this is important for us to see, you know, the, we've had several, several folks mention things, so this is important to be here and be involved and let us know what your thoughts are. So we appreciate everybody here today.
Is everybody that's here concerned about the environmental impact?
Hi, actually, I'm Darlene Higden, this is my husband Stuart Higden. We live in Flat Rock, and I actually contacted Adam two years ago and took pictures of the foam that had actually been produced right after the first initial application of biosolids. And when I talked to Adam, to make a really long story short, they didn't, they didn't know what it could be, they had no idea. The person I was talking to, "We'll get somebody out there." And so I said, "Okay." And I just assumed that they would, and they didn't. Well, I had to keep digging, and then I found out and spoke with the folks at the Mox and Ben Waste Water Treatment Facility, and they explained to me the whole process and what was going on, and that Adam had actually signed the permits. And so it turns out the person I've been talking with actually signed the permits to bring it out. So, you know, it was really disheartening, it was really frustrating that, you know, I was trying to figure out what this was, and we didn't know what it was. So we were just trying to say, "Hey, something's going on out here." Well, they assured us that they would do water testing, but that they couldn't test any soil, that Adam was, could only do the water. So when I talked to Mox and Ben, the person over that entire, the entire program, they assured me that they wouldn't bring any more out because by then there had been two or three complaints, because I had told people who to call and make a complaint about the smell because it was so bad. The McPords couldn't even go outside in their yard, I mean, their grandkids couldn't even play in their yard, it was so bad. So when I talked to him, they assured me two years ago that they wouldn't bring any more out, that Denali was actually their subcontractor who actually applied it according to the EPA standards. And they said that they have a five-star rating program that they're trying to attain, that the state of Tennessee wants to get five stars. And part of that rating is that they won't take it to anywhere that neighbors or the community has made a complaint about it. And so in their effort, Mox and Ben Waste Water Treatment Facility, and I'm not trying to defend them, but in their defense, they did try to get Denali, the subcontractor, and the landowners to hold a public hearing in Flat Rock to explain to them what was going to be applied, the biosolids, the process to get it to the biosolid stage, what we could expect as far as smells, rains, the content of it, all of those things. And both Denali and the landowners both declined and wouldn't do it. So the wastewater treatment facility said, "We couldn't go out there and do it independently, it had to be them." So it was more or less an agreement between those two individuals and how to apply it. So they do have a contract, they do have a schedule of rate application that they're supposed to adhere to, and they're supposed to not have it within certain number of feet between them and a public area, between water and all that stuff. So they were very concerned about the foam. They weren't so concerned until I sent them the pictures, because it was pretty significant foam, and several people were very interested once they saw the foam, because it was not a natural occurrence that you would normally see through just bacteria that you normally see around streams, that's pretty normal. This was really significant. They were very concerned. So Denali actually came out and did water samples, but they wouldn't release the results to anybody in our community. We, I asked for them specifically, and I asked the person at the wastewater treatment facility if they could get them, and they couldn't. So then I called Adam back and tried to go down that avenue, and they wouldn't release them either. So it was particularly interesting to us because we live in an arid area. You know, we, we did have cattle grazing, we don't have cattle grazing anymore in that area, but we did, and so, you know, any ponds, you know, that's contaminated by the groundwater, by any of that runoff, it's contaminating ponds and, like Sharon said, wells. So it's a particular concern. Darlene Higden?
Has there been any response from the EPA? Has anybody heard anything from the EPA?
The EPA actually is responsible for making sure that everybody who is a subcontractor applying the biosolids is adhering to their standards. You have to prove that they didn't adhere to the standards. So let's look at the players here. The subcontractor who's applying it, are they going to prove that they didn't adhere? No. You have the landowner who asked for biosolids, are they going to prove, are they going to prove that it wasn't adhered to by the EPA standards? No. So then the only people that you have left are going to be the people who actually live there. And so what's been effective so far is that none of us have been collectively working on this, it's been one person speaking, or one person speaking, or one person speaking. And they've actually already applied for two years now on, in that area. So I don't know why they sent that letter, I don't know if maybe that particular contractor, that landowner was up, and they, by EPA standards, cannot, because the EPA standards are about this thick, and if you try to read them, you will fall asleep about pages.
It happens, so I know.
So I don't know, maybe that's why they sent that letter. I know that there have been other landowners who were approached, some who were, actually have had biosolids placed in the past. So I couldn't answer that. Our best hope is that, you know, this is our little corner of the world. Now, the EPA standards include that they can't put it on schools or anywhere there's a public area or playgrounds, you know, they can't do that. I had many conversations with the wastewater treatment facility and their process to eliminate the constituents in biosolids. And let me tell you, I'm a nurse, pediatric nurse, and we had several conversations about how they were effectively eliminating the heavy metals, because if they can do that, hey, they've got a million-dollar process, because it's not being done anywhere else. Same thing, if you think about anything, you put down your toilets or your sinks, people wash paintbrushes, people who are on chemotherapy, any of their waste that goes down the drains, any medical waste, any, any of those byproducts are in that biosolid. They do apply enough lime to get the pH up to 12, which will effectively, should effectively, if it's done right, kill a lot of the fecal coliforms, any of those types of bacteria, but the things that can't be killed, the heavy metals, those are being applied to pastures where cattle are grazed, and according to the EPA standards, you're not supposed to graze cattle within 30 days, you're not supposed to place it within 30 days or a certain amount of time. But you can't, again, who's going to enforce that? So you have to think about that. The biosolids are not, I mean, it's been proven that it is not a good thing for our area. So again, it's in our little corner right now, but this could be your neighborhood tomorrow. I mean, there, we do have a sewage problem in this country. The EPA has to figure out what to do with all this sewage. You either have to burn it, you have to bury it, or you have to turn it into biosolids. And let me tell you, if you buy organic soil at any local Home Depot, Lowe's, if you turn it over and you read Class A biosolid, that is biosolids that they are treating at wastewater treatment facilities and putting in your soil. So put that around your tomatoes, think about that. And this is not Alabama sewage. This is Tennessee sewage. So, I mean, if we're going to spread sewage, you know, let's at least let it be Alabama sewage. I mean, come on.
I talked to a representative, Tommy Haynes, here in Bucksmoons, he called me, and I phoned, and I want to know, he's in Montgomery, and I talked with Ronnie Clark, you know, he had, he was very upset with it, had the pictures and things, and, you know, Tommy wanted to know what I thought as a farmer. And I said, "Tommy, I said, I hauled some of it out of Florida." I said, "But all you build, laden things, had all the papers, everything there, it showed the bacterial levels and all, it was like fertilizer, creole." And I said, "It meant all specs." Well, when I talked with the guy with Denali, you know, I asked him about, they have the top of the sheet and stuff, well, he never get answer, so, Lake Majestic, he spoke up, you know. And he said, "Everything is okay, you know, this is a savings. If you're a farmer, you're going to get involved." I said, "Well, you know, first of all, all the ground is saturated." And I said, "We're doing something right there that's going to cost us in the long run for our children and grandchildren." I said, "I'm kind of farmer, I don't want that kind of stuff." And I said, "I'm here to represent faith." And I was kind of irritated along with Tommy, along with Tommy, because he went to the governor, and she would not address the issue, because there had so much chaos when I'm down at that time, so, I mean, I'm right here with you.
You have conflicting reports. You have the EPA who has a vested interest in dealing with a sewage problem for this entire country. So they're not going to say that it's not bad. What they're going to do is try to create a program where they can make it okay to use. Then you have the people who do not want it to happen at all, and they're always going to be in conflict, so people are being polarized on this issue. And so my, our hopes, you know, today, were just to make sure that, I've done so much research on biosolids, I am a, I'm a novice expert, I think, at this point, and my concern is basically what yours is. If there's runoff from traditional commercial fertilizers, and there is, and it's creating a huge issue with nitrogen depletion in our ponds and our rivers and our, you know, the toxic algae bloom, it's because of that runoff. This is creating a similar problem, because once the ground is saturated, it can't do anything but sit and then float and then go off, runoff into something. So if you live in a rural area, you're, you have no say-so. I mean, this is an agreement between a person and a subcontractor who's applying it. And I equate it to, "I don't like maple trees in my neighbor's yard, and they plant a yard full of maple trees." I can't go make them stop planting maple trees. All I can do is try to explain to them why it's not healthy to do that, why our whole community doesn't want the maple trees there. But if you have a vested financial interest in it, then it's going to be an uphill battle for us. So we are hoping that, you know, we can use that one clause that might be open to us, to say, "We have other forms of fertilizer, we have other, in this day and age, we have, it's open, wide open what we can do." I mean, we have more knowledge now than we've ever had before. We don't have to revert back to crap.
What I was shocked was Adam, because I was on the Flat Rock River on Eastern Shore, nature conservancy stuff, there for seven years, and their main concern was stopping all the cattle, every landowner out from getting near the stream. And they have something like this, and it's toxic, you know, and they, okay, you know, that's what, that's what Tommy, I said, "That's what really shocks me," you know. Well, if you don't see the evidence, I invited all you boys to my farm, I have a mile of Bryant Creek on my farm, and let's pull the shoes off and wait out here and see how you feel. I'd like to come visit with you.
He said, "Boys."
I don't want ladies be disturbed. When I was a boy, I used to wait in and swim in, and now I won't even allow my children to go visit the creek.
Where you live at, Mr. Carroll?
At Rosalie.
Rosalie.
I own a, I own a mile of Bryant Creek, and it runs two-thirds of that creek, it runs right into my creek and my ponds. And the odor is so bad, you can't sleep at night when they start to put it out.
How many farmers have put it out out there? Just the one in Majestic?
There's one in Fackler. I talked to Tommy to that dude, they said there was, he said there was one in Fackler.
Flat Rock, just one in Flat Rock?
One in Flat Rock and one in Fackler that I know about. There's two in Flat Rock?
Two in Flat Rock.
Those two in Flat Rock.
The Lake Majestic puts it out in Rosalie also, along with some Wilkes, puts it out in Rosalie.
The permits are actually public. If you can get Adam to release them, they are public. The wastewater treatment facility, they sent me copies of the permit. Well, Adam didn't. Adam wouldn't send me anything, which I thought was very interesting. The Mox and Ben wastewater treatment facility, he said, "We make all of these documents public." He said, "We have nothing to hide," he said, and he actually emailed me those documents that showed the dates of the application, the landowners who had actually agreed to it. So if you want copies of, or if you want to know a specific number, get with the person who's over that program now. And they actually changed that from the one that I was talking to until now. So I have the name at home, but I don't remember it right this second, but they will actually give you a copy of that permit.
I've actually seen plastics, I've seen one toothbrush handle that comes through it. I picked up several pieces of plastics, spoons, look like syringes, and look like one toothbrush handle that was thrown out through there.
I don't understand why Adam, Tommy Haynes, I talked to him today, he was on his way back from Richmond, Virginia, I think, and he said that he was right Friday and today on the phone trying to get ahold of Adam, because they did a test in March, and it were about three weeks ago. They refused to let those go.
That's right.
They refused to let, but he said it was bad. Whoever he talked to the first time, he said it's bad, what they were putting out at Flat Rock. He said there was, he told me some of the things that was in it, but he said, "They're just avoiding me, they don't want it public knowledge." You know, I want that, when we were dealing with TVA, they wouldn't give us anything. And then we had that sample sent off just for two things, and, well, we didn't know that they had, we tried to give them one of our reports to show, and they didn't have, had no interest in.
Well, we don't know how the subcontractor, we know that, we know that they're supposed to adhere to EPA standards, we understand that. We understand that. Um, but we don't know how they handle the trucks in between the applications. So, we don't know what they use those trucks for. I'm sure they're not just for that purpose. So, like he was saying, we don't know what they're for. So, they could use it for, you know, sanitation purposes and then use it for bio solid applications. We don't know. But that's another part of the problem is that we weren't ed- nobody gave us a choice, you know, to have this dumped in our backyard. And think about what this does to our property values, you know? The only person that could benefit from that is the person who is buying up a lot of property in that area.
Mr. Carter, have you ever had your water tested?
No, but I have a sample of my water before they put it out. I have some water to test when time comes. If I ever have a problem with my cattle, I would go through the process of testing. But I called the health department, and they were so generous to me, they told me to go to Montgomery.
Really?
So, you know, if our health department can't do anything, Montgomery's not going to do anything for us.
I think they're stadium bullying. The county health department, it's called the county health department, but they're stadium bullying.
Well, they told me to go to Montgomery. That couldn't help me.
We've looked at, we've talked to several agencies. We've contacted EPA, and we've talked to A.D.M. to, to get some information, but as far as testing, we've not seen any of that either.
Gentlemen, there was testing water this weekend. I have yet to find results. Results, yeah. You'll form a, to all of them.
Any of that information that you can provide would be helpful. Um, again, I'm trying to understand a little bit more about how, how we can apply this law, uh, and if applicable, something like that may allow us to act. So, if, if you have information that, you know, testing or, uh, really that would be the most helpful thing for us to look at.
You come out, I'll let you test it. You walk up there scraping them in, you'll say, "Now, I don't understand how people can do this."
Well, I understand that, but they got to get.
That's your best test you can have is just seeing it and, and seeing the results of it. You don't want to give anything from the government. They don't want to have it.
Well, again, they have a vested interest in not, I mean, that's why A.D.M. initially didn't respond to my calls or my, you know, the, the complaint about the foam two years ago when they first started applying it out there. They didn't. And I didn't understand at the time why they didn't, but in the, you know, in two years since, I've done research and done a lot of work on this, and I've, I've learned that the EPA is not going to veto this program. They want this program to happen. They have to. As a matter of fact, they put this bio solids at Disney World, and they advertise that fact. So, um, they want it to happen. Tennessee has a vested interest because they have a sewage problem. They need a place to put it. Um, and again, you know, it's not even Alabama sewage. It's Tennessee. So, nobody's going to say, "No, we don't want that to happen. God, this is all happening wrong. We got to stop this." That's not what's going, we have to stop it.
We hope to have some, uh, better understanding over the next couple of weeks of how we can apply that, and hopefully we can, uh, let you know, uh, when the next opportunity is. And if everyone here would like to leave, if they're signing out.
Could everybody give your name and number that's involved that's got this problem? Would you be in touch with?
If you will, before you leave, uh, put your name and information on here. If you'd like for us to notify you in that meeting that they're going to have to assess this, let me know.
If you want to put your name down, email address down, if you can get on our, uh, mailer where we have, if it's on the agenda or any discussion, if it's on the agenda, you can get it.
Okay. Uh, so, we'll conclude that discussion for this time. Uh, hopefully, again, next few weeks, we'll bring that back again. So, at this time, we're going to enter into our, the rest of our business meeting. And if anyone would like to sit around for afterwards, we can discuss a little bit further afterward if you want. So, we'll move on to the, the business portion of our meeting. We have our minutes. We have minutes from both April and May in your packets. Are there any changes to the minutes as they're presented? Any questions or comments on these minutes? And do we have a motion to approve the minutes as they're presented?
I have a motion to approve them.
Okay, motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Okay. We have no old business, and the first item of new business is a motion to enter into executive session. Uh, we'll do this, and if you need to use the table while we're in the executive session, you can put all your information down. So, uh, at this time, we'll enter, and Mr. Porter, how do I need to clarify this exactly?
Um, the first, uh, the executive session is to discuss the name and character of the individual or potential litigation.
Okay. So, we'll enter to, motion to enter into executive session for that reason?
For the permission.
Motion, we have a second?
Oh, sir.
Okay, motion and a second. Uh, all in favor say aye. And we will return shortly. We'll try to.